In unity, God, we add that you move by your power upon us, God, that we will hear each other, God, and that we will do what's best for our community, God. We ask that you be with us as we go throughout this meeting, God. Let us all speak clearly, God, and let us seek to understand. And it's in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
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 Thank you so much. Now, I can't.
Is me?
Yes.
I thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, Commissioners. So the first thing on your agenda is the Schools' Capital Needs Grant and our Finance Director. Miss Stephanie Williams is going to lead that for us.
Good afternoon, everyone. Advance County Schools are supplying for forty-seven million from the Needs-Based Public School Capital Fund for critical facility improvements at fourteen of their campuses. State law requires the county to provide a five percent local match for the grant totaling up to two-point-three-five million dollars. The match will come from the School Capital Reserve Fund, supported by local sales taxes and accrued capital funds. The commitments are: the county commits to providing the full five percent match. Funds will only come from the county and only from county or other non-state sources. The commitment would not replace the county's regular annual capital outlay support to schools. The county manager and finance officer are directed to formalize the agreement with the Board of Education and ensure compliance with state law, and the resolution is effective upon adoption until the local match is fully satisfied.
And so our recommendation is just to approve the five percent match for the school system.
Have we been able to determine what part of that will come from sales taxes and what might have to come from fund balance?
All of it will come from sales tax because of the capital reserves that we have in place right now.
Thank you.
You're now inside over a five-year period.
Yes, sir.
Not one year, but five years.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I'd like to make the motion we're approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second and a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Aye, aye.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, the next thing on your agenda is the emergency pay policy for the Detention Center. And before I ask the Sheriff to come up, I just want to highlight the proposed changes that I've, that I'm recommending for the policy. So the current policy, oh, hold on, let everyone exit real quick. So the current policy allows exempt staff members of any pay grade as well as non-exempt staff members. So the proposed changes is for current non-exempt staff only with a pay grade of seventy-two or below. So exempt staff and exempt staff from the Sheriff's Office or Detention Center above pay grade seventy-two are not eligible under this policy. The employees will go from receiving fifty dollars an hour for emergency pay to their actual hourly rate, their actually hourly overtime rate, so it'll be different depending on the employee's regular rate. And that was actually a recommendation from the Sheriff and building last week when we had a conversation. The administrative requirements are changing a little bit, and so all of the emergency assignments must be first pre-approved by the Sheriff in writing. After this approval, the proposed schedules and expenditures under this policy must be submitted to the county manager and the Finance Director for a pre-audit prior to hours worked and payment. No one employee shall exceed sixty hours per pay period. And the other recommendation is to transportation of inmates under this policy should be handled by patrol deputies on regular shift without additional pay unless it causes undue hardship on the Sheriff's Office operations. In instances of undue hardship, the Sheriff shall request approval explicitly from the county manager with support and documentation. The emergency pay policy is temporary only and will remain in effect only until lap salaries, lap salary funds are fully expended, and the policy will automatically terminate once those funds are no longer available and will not be automatically reinstated if lap salaries accrue over a period of time. And so the concerns that I've had, that I have with this policy and the Sheriff and I've had this conversation, the Sheriff and the staff actually admitted to abuse of the policy initially. The policy was approved back in April with the understanding of oversight from the Sheriff. The inmate population today is sixty-three compared to, I believe we had around one-sixty or so in April. And as far as staffing goes, let me see if this is on here, I can't. Back in, I believe, April or so, I think there were probably twenty-two vacancies. And the vacancies right now, I'm trying to see if it's on this report. Sheriff, are the vacancies on here? Okay, do you know how many vacancies you have? Is it twelve? Okay, compare it to twenty-two back in April. Uh, let's see. And the issue for me has never necessarily been the policy itself, it's just the management and the oversight of the policy. So with the new recommended restrictions, we feel as if we can ensure more oversight over this policy. And so Sheriff, if you want to come up and...
Let me ask a question real quick. The, um, when he was getting the fifty dollars overtime, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Did that include the fifty dollars extra hour plus the time and a half of overtime?
Uh-huh.
All of that was?
Mm-hmm, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you. I stand to be corrected, it was your regular salary plus fifty dollars an hour.
Yeah, regular salary.
But she said overtime plus.
But did they get off, if they went over the hours, so was the time and a half still included with?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Yes, that's right, you're right.
Um, first, I thank you for the opportunity to allow me to speak on behalf of the Vance County Sheriff's Office and the Detention Center. I kind of oppose some of the things that the county manager says regarding to getting prior approval. Currently, we have a hundred and seventy-one inmates, a hundred and seventy-one.
One-seventy-one not in, how many you have in-house? Oh, you want to get to it? Okay, all right, okay.
We have a hundred and seventy-one inmates. We have sixty-three in-house at the Vance County Detention Center. We have a hundred and eight inmates spread across the state of North Carolina from the East Coast to the Tennessee border and the state of North Carolina, Cherokee and Swain County. Uh, there's no way humanly possible that we can wait to get permission to go pick up inmates. We get these calls all times of day, nights, weekend, and hour. And if county manager want me to call her a certain hour and certain night, and I give her heads up, I have no problem with that. But to wait to prior approval, we cannot wait. These judges, we have a judge sitting here today. These judges, when they expect those defendants to be in court, they want them in court. If they don't, they're making example out of the Sheriff or the major to jail. And that's not a good thing to be standing in front of a judge and issue show cause on the Sheriff or the major jail while inmate is not in court. Through Superior Court, I have no control of Superior Court. They've scheduled fifteen to twenty inmates to be in court and may not get to a first one, but they're required to be because of the risks being issued and their court dates. So we may go to Swain County, Cherokee, round trip, twenty hours, twenty hours. We have to have a chase car. There's no way in the world, I'm gonna put two officers out there on the street in the mountains of North Carolina transporting fifteen to twenty inmates in a vehicle. We have to stop for break, they have to go to restroom, we have to feed them. Um, they have, the officers themselves have to take a break. If they had a flat tire broke down, there's no way in the world, one officer can change the tire and one officer can sit there and watch fifteen, twenty inmates come out of the van. So this is necessary evil, but you know, I want you to understand, we're talking about safety. We're definitely talking about safety. Uh, we have reached and achieved some goals at the Vance County Detention Center. We have minimized, uh, with the staffing and the funds that you all provided for us with the deputies working down there. Uh, we have minimized the contraband coming into the facility. We have minimized the assault on the officers and inmates. Uh, we appreciate those funds. I understand county manager being stewardess of county with funds. We, here and I have talked about this. Uh, I'm, you know, whatever the board decides, I'm gonna have to live with it. But I want you to remember, put officer's safety first. Um, Major Bullock called me the other night. Not a detention officer showed up, him and two other officers had to go down there and work. Things like that happen. I don't have time to call the county manager and say, hey, I need to put people in place. Regarding to what she's talking about, the mismanagement, I, I can see the abuse of some of the guys working it, but they have, I have no choice. Everybody don't want to work security. Everybody do not want to work the Detention Center. So I had to utilize what resources I have. If it was a major or captain and they want to work the Detention Center, I have to allow them to work because nobody else will work it. And to put a cap on working six hours during a pay period, that's not going to work for us. Because they're going to run out their hours, and then we're going to have some shifts and they're empty. We're going to have some transport, needs are not met, and the judges are going to be looking at me, issuing show calls to the Sheriff, and you know, they're not, there won't be issue against the county manager or the county board of commissioners, there're going to be issues against the Sheriff of Vance County for not having inmates in court. I think we have a good system that's working right now. The, we've down from twenty-two or twenty-four, uh, detention officers down to twelve, but the ones we're hiring has to be trained. I didn't say certified, they have to be trained. They got to have a skill set, they, they have to know what they're doing. I cannot put them out there on the open highway transporting inmates across the state and not have the proper training. Then I got to get them qualified with weapons. Once we can get more officers qualified with weapons, that would, uh, stop some of the deputies from working overtime and making funds. Also, the county manager mentioned that I can utilize deputies to transport inmates. No, I cannot. I don't have enough three deputies on the street. I'm down twelve deputies at the Vance County Sheriff's Office. So that is out of the question, utilizing deputies to transport inmates all across the state. Yes, I might can get one to run one to Grandville, Franklin, or surrounding county. Maybe hunt, pushing to the Harney, Harney or Wilson County. But asking the deputy to transport on the street, pulling them away from the citizens in the community, the trans, there's no way in the world they can do it. We transport inmates to these facilities, we have to bring them back for numerous of reasons. We have to bring them back for court. If inmates in another county get sick, that Sheriff Office, that Sheriff Detention Center do not sit with their inmate. They will sit with the inmate no longer than a Vance County deputy have to drive six, seven, eight, or nine hours to sit with the inmate for however long it may be. We have known in Vance County to sit with inmates over here at Duke Hospital, the Marvira Peron Hospital, two, three days up to a week or more. So if inmate in another county that far away, I'm gonna have to send two deputies that far and plus get reservation for a hotel. So I cannot utilize my deputies on the street to go and transport inmate more than two hours away. I'm open for any questions. I, I just ask y'all to bear with us, and hopefully this will be soon, be over soon, that we get the architackers down there and get things moving, that we can bring some of the inmates to, back to Vance County. But right now, we're at what we're at.
I want to ask you a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Picking up the inmates, you know ahead of time when they need to be in court, so it's not a last minute.
No, ma'am.
So you know when they need to be there, right?
It, it could be the next day, ma'am. I get, I get writs from.
Aren't they on a court document?
No, not all of them. I get, I get writs from different judges, I get writs from the clerk's office, I get writs from the district attorney. And it's, all the writs just don't come from the district court judge or the clerk's office. They come from different sources, and I get a writ, I email them just quick as I get them to the Vance County Detention Center. They can make arrangements so we can go pick up these inmates. And what, and what Major Bullock has done to assist us in that, they were running zigzag across the county and across the state. So what he implemented is, hey, we're gonna pick up everybody on the west side, we're gonna pick up everybody on the east side. So that cut back a lot on our mileage and our man hours picking up inmates. Uh, yes, ma'am.
So the, the DA office comes up with a court calendar, they don't give you all, they, I mean, they are where people are.
The clerk's, the clerk's office prepares a court calendar. For Superior, for Superior Court, uh, the DA has their hands in and, and prepping who they're gonna do for trial.
Correct, so they don't know that we have inmates all across the state of North Carolina?
They do.
So that you all have time to get them?
They do.
Back here for court?
Yes, they, we do have some preparation to get a lot of the inmates, but it's always that case when we don't have preparation.
And so they don't do any of the cases via Zoom?
Ma'am.
They don't do any of the cases?
They do, uh, I believe it's called Crave Judge, Crave Court Call, but all counties not on board with that.
Okay.
And, and not only is that, it has to be the end of, the individual judge decide to do it. One judge, Vance County may do it, they may have a judge from Franklin County come here, may not do it. I have no control of that. I would love that they'd done it all, and then in some circumstance and situation, an inmate has to be present in court.
Can I ask this question? Can I ask this question? In terms of relationship with the judges and with the courts and everything, there's no way you can build a relationship that they understand what we're going through as a county? It seems though that somewhere you ought to be able to work out, you know, realizing what this county is faced up against, that between your relationship with the, with the judges, their understanding of what we, we're faced with, there should be some way to minimize the stress that you are experiencing trying to get this done.
Major Bullock is working on that. Major Mitchell, before he left, has a working relationship with the district attorney office, trying to minimize some of these transport. But still, these people are calendared or they're writs here, and we have required to get them here. Yes, sir.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, we've had this problem for quite a lot of months. It ain't just happened. And so you're just telling me that the major's working on this now? Why in the world didn't we start four months ago?
Sir, we've been working on this, but prior to moving these inmates out.
You mean you can't get anything from the district attorney about working with you?
Sir, I'm not going to talk about district attorney. Uh, I know that when I have paperwork to get people in court, I do my best to.
You know, I, I would think that they would do anything they could to help you and make it easier for us because they understand our situation. But when you go from a hundred and fifty inmates in-house to forty-seven inmates, you don't need the same help. You need less help.
No, sir, we, we need the same help, but we got to transport the inmates.
You got less inmates in the jail.
Yes, sir, but they are spread across the whole state of North Carolina.
And, and if you have.
And, and we have to have transportation, Mr. Hester, we have to have transportation teams.
But you haven't done anything to work with the district attorney?
Yes, we do, sir.
Well, you just said you didn't.
No, I didn't say we didn't, I just said.
Did you start it now?
We've been started.
Well.
This, this, it's, it's been, it's been a battle.
Understand how it costs the same amount or more.
Okay, I understand, okay.
More.
Say if we got forty, forty inmates at the jail, we got a hundred and eight inmates across the whole state of North Carolina, who's going to transport these inmates, Mr. Hester? Two deputies can't.
So you're.
Four deputies can't. I mean, it takes them, I mean, you have a transportation on the road, twenty-four-seven transporting inmates.
But I, I have not heard anything constantly over and over and over for the last year, year and a half about disorganized at the jail. That's all I've heard. How much money have we spent as a county trying in dollars and cents? How many million?
Mr. He, Mr. Hester.
I'm asking, I'm asking our county manager.
I understand you're asking your county manager, but you're talking to the sheriff.
Sir, I've talked to the county manager.
Well, I'm standing at the podium, I'm gonna say what I have to say.
I know, but I want to answer Commissioner Hester's question. So as it pertains to emergency pay, since April first, we've spent almost five hundred thousand dollars.
Five hundred thousand?
Yeah, as far as repairs, I don't have that number right now, but we, I can get that, but emergency pay is almost five hundred thousand dollars since April first.
And Sheriff, what I want to know, I've heard you say a bullet, and I see that our manager had put, uh, uh, something in place to work with you. So out of all that you said, your main concern is that you don't want to be able to contact?
It's no, it's not that I don't want to, I'm not trying.
To reach, you know, you don't want to restrict.
I'm not trying to bypass her, I'm just saying it's, it's impossible to do that. Because at the drop of a dime, we may have to go pick up a.
Possible county manager, because you don't want to.
It's.
So he's saying, you're, you're saying at night. I'm just trying to make sure we get some clarity. You said at night, you can't call, you can't afford to be calling.
As Sheriff of Vance County, I am not going to ask anyone in this room permission to do anything, okay? I understand the fundings. If y'all want to cut the fundings off, I understand it. As, as courtesy me to let her know that we're going somewhere to pick up an inmate, but I am required by law to have these people in court, and I'm going, I am going to do it. I'm not going to go through no protocol and asking somebody permission to do my job.
Sheriff, what, what is typically the amount of time, the amount of notice you have for an inmate to be transported back for court?
That can, it could varies.
I mean.
Um, I can get, I can get, um, writs, um, probably Tuesday, I send them out, as soon as I get them, I send them immediately. Then they have to make arrangements. Uh, it would be senseless to send one person to Swain County, a nine-hour drive to pick up one inmate. So we try to coordinate it.
So if you get a writ on Tuesday, when was that person generally being court?
Depends on how many other people in the western part of the state to get back here. If they, if their court date is Monday, uh, we, we try to have them back over the weekend so that we wouldn't, we wouldn't dare have nobody on the highways try to pick them up that Monday morning. We would try to have them here over the weekend, yes.
And likewise, I understand you have people calling sick or whatever. And I, I, I see the necessity for some flexibility there. Uh, and for the, the pre-audit part, I'm not sure what that pre-audit thing means.
Just ensuring that they have the money in their budget to support the policy, that's their real concern.
So is that something that we could say, we have this money available, so he knows going, like on Wednesday, we know we've got twenty thousand dollars that's available?
We could do that, yeah, we could do that, and I think.
Then we wouldn't have that emergency situation on a Friday and him have to call you, you know, do that.
And we keep talking about lap salaries and lap salaries, but my concern with lap salaries is even though it's budgeted, we could be using lap salaries to go back into the fund balance for the repairs of the facility instead of using the money that we have in our fund balance. And so I hate to expend our lap salaries with this policy when we could be putting that money elsewhere to support.
I mean.
The repairs.
The situation is, is that if we don't manage it correctly, it puts us at potential risk.
Correct, and that's why I have a more restrictive policy for management of the policy.
Work on some of the flexibility. I understand there's been some abuse of the policy in the past, and so maybe we need to do some things to, to regulate that, but I think there might need to be a medium there.
Mr. Brum, that abuse, if people want to say is abuse, mismanaged, call it whatever you want to. When you only got a handful of people who wants to work at the Detention Center who gets more hours than a few other people and ones who chose not. Uh, if you look at one person make, just, I'm just throwing some numbers. Just say one person made forty thousand dollars working overtime, another guy only made twenty thousand dollars. It's because that one person wants to continue to work. The other person, he's satisfied, he was standing his or her lane with that one or two days a week, or one or two or three days a month. I am glad that the ones who step up and chose to come and work, because a lot of them are not doing it.
Can I ask you a que, was there?
Yes, ma'am.
Were you not concerned with burnout for any of your staff that were working the additional hours?
Yes, I am. I am very concerned about it.
Okay, okay.
Curtis, when you transport the people in terms of you're trying to work out eastern part of the state, the Piedmont and the, and the western part of the state, are you bringing more than, how many people are you trying to bring at a time?
We're, we're bringing anywhere from sixteen to nineteen people back at a time. And they're, they're, they get in court and they do nothing with them, and we had to make arrangements and take them straight back. And then if we get someone out of safekeeping, it's kind of hard to get the bid back and say, it may be two or three weeks if we're able to get the bid and, bid in state prison safekeeping. They tell us when you pick them up out of safekeeping, that bid is not promised.
So when you go to pick up that number of people, how you transport them, individual on cars?
No, sir, we have, we, we have a vans we utilize, and then we have a chase car for safety issues.
Do, um, I know when this all started, you guys got together with the DA's office, and you got a whole lot of cases adjudicated.
That's true.
When's the last time we tried to do that?
Major Bullock is doing that now, sir.
Okay, how often have we done that since that original?
We haven't done, uh, one time, uh, when Major Mitchell was doing it. The, the problem is the inmates, uh, they don't want to take pleas. They come to court, we have inmates been in our system come to court and fire judges, and I ain't yet figured out, I'm not a judge, I'm fire their attorney, I know, yeah, I figured, figured that out. How can you fire somebody you don't hire? They come to court and tell the judge, I don't want their attorney anymore, they get another attorney. They play the system. The complacency would be in Vance County Detention Center like they are in other facilities across the state.
I mean, I've been in the jail, and some of the guys there think it's their place to live.
Yes, they do.
And they, they want to be there. You know, you need to fix this place up, it's not nice enough for me here. I mean, that's, it's, it's, you know, it's crazy.
Do you have any retired deputies that will be willing to come on staff and help with transportation?
No, ma'am.
Have you explored it? I'm just asking, okay.
They, I mean, you take the ones that retired, they work, they pick state jobs, they didn't get a deeper retirement system.
Oh, okay.
When I see the bus for the state prison, the yellow bus, the prison, how many folks are in that bus? They got a whole lot of folks in the bus. How many is a driver, how many folks in the bus?
Um, three, driver and two armed guard.
Okay.
But they, no, they wouldn't allow use their bus, and we can't, you cannot house a, a inmate in a state facility unless they're, uh, been sentenced. And even, um, if Judge Stevenson, uh, uh, Judge Burnett, uh, sent somebody to Department of Corrections, the Vance County Sheriff's Office has to call a state facility and make reservations before they were accepted. We've had people in our facility who's been, uh, convicted and sentenced and still waiting, it's called jail backlog. They're waiting in our facility two, three weeks or more, waiting on to be placed in the state facility.
And these individuals are sentenced over six months?
They were, they were sentenced in district court or either Superior Court. And I just can't, we used to just take them that afternoon, get the commitment from the clerk's office and take them that afternoon. Now it's a jail backlog, it can take two or three weeks.
For Sheriff, do you understand our position really as the Commissioners?
I do, ma'am.
We have more than one, uh, service that we have to make sure that we run us, our county. You just listened to, we got five hundred thousand dollars almost in what, not even six months? That's not even considered of what we've already put into the jail for work. We hear you, but it's just like, it's just like, it's, we, we doing the same thing over.
Well, ma'am, I, I apologize, I, I didn't create this.
And we didn't either.
I didn't create this, I inherited, the sheriff before me inherited, and it's been ignored. So I've been here four decades, and I watched sheriffs come in argue the same fight about salaries for retention and recruiting, and we still arguing the same thing. I watched sheriffs for the, the three previous sheriffs argue the same fight about a detention center. And thank God for our county manager having visions and insight and the board of commissioners to move forward and, and build a new facility. Yes, I know it's going to take three to five years, it's not going to happen overnight. I do know about the tax bases in Vance County. We're not flourishing with taxes like Franklin County or Northern Wake County coming into Franklin County. We don't have those tax bases, and I understand that. But as Sheriff of Vance County, I have a duty and responsibility, and also do you all have a duty and responsibility?
Curtis, I listened to you talk, and we only have X amount of dollars based on what Commissioner Fane was saying. I'm going to play devil's advocate with you. If we give you everything that you want and we run out of money, what are we going to do?
I don't want you to give me everything, I just want you to meet the need.
But I'm saying, in terms of what we, what you proposing, will drain in terms of budget. We will not have money to do stuff we need to do. So what happens if we get to that point?
Well.
What do you envision that, what would we be, what would we do for you?
I understand having.
Detention, what would we be able to do based on if we get to the point and there's no money to do anything?
Um, Commissioner Kelly, I understand fund balance, rainy day fund. Well, I'm telling y'all right now, it's raining like hell in Vance County. It's pouring down, and I'm getting wet every day. And I understand, no, no, let me finish.
I understand that, Curtis, but what would we, what would we do if?
Your house, my house, your house, if you know you need a roof on it, because I know it can cost you X amount of dollars, you going in the savings and get it. We know the needs to be met here in Vance County. Go into the fund balance and get some of those dollars and use it to correct the problems and issues that we face.
But if we do that and we don't accomplish in eliminating the problem, we write back.
Then, and then if we don't, if we don't, we're liable, we're going to get sued. Sheriff of Vance County can get sued, and they're going to start right here and go all the way around, because I'm including each and every one of you, we all going to get sued. I am not going to get sued by myself, I'm not going to hold this by myself, knowing what's going on.
That you the sheriff?
Ma'am.
That's your detention center.
Ma'am, it's not my detention center.
You, you the sheriff, every time we come with some.
That, that building belongs to the county, that, that building belongs to the county of Vance, I don't own the building.
But every time we try to come with a solution, I'm the sheriff, I'm the sheriff.
No, I just.
You just told us.
I'm just letting you know that you're not going to control and you're not going to handle it.
Nobody trying to control, we're trying to get your place. Well, you got to meet us halfway, um, it's a lot we're putting into that detention.
I understand, but that's.
And I respect, and regardless of, they are somebody in that place, and I respect.
They are, and they are.
And I, you know, and I believe in making sure regardless of what they done, that they still are human beings, so we need to take care.
The point we are arguing here today is funds to make sure that the sheriff can properly and safely get our inmates back to Vance County for whatever need, bonding, hospital needs, or court. It's my responsibility to get them back here.
Okay, so our county manager just gave us a proposal, what do, what do you want? What do you not want, uh, what, what do you want different from?
I'm actually not to put a cap on it, because I don't know who can work tomorrow.
Not to put a cap on?
The, the, uh, the minute, the, uh, on the hour, six hours pay, um, per pay period. Because if you do that, um, uh, Madam Chair, it's going to limit, limit the Vance County Sheriff's Office and what staff will be working in an emergency purpose.
How many hours do you think a deputy works before he's at risk of burnout and he's at risk of potentially getting hurt because he's, he's burned out?
Major?
Yes, I mean. I mean, there are a lot of risk we've got to weigh.
It is.
And if you've got a man that's worked forty hours extra and he's worked eighty or ninety hours, I've been there, I've worked hours ninety, a hundred hours a week. You're walking zombie. That person is not the person that needs to be in the jail.
And I understand that, and still on the safety issue, two officers trying to transport 16, 18 inmates up the street and get hurt.
I think there's a clause in what I'm reading that allows you to ask the county manager to, for assistance in transportation, and she can grant that. Is that what I read in the policy?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I mean, that's just, this is something that, that, it's just part of the process. Just like, you know, you talked about on the weekend, we might not have. You can call on Wednesday now, that's part of, we've already said that while we're sitting here. You can call on Wednesday, you've got the funds, so you don't have to wait till Friday afternoon when somebody doesn't show up. That, that can be done just by managing and communicating.
But Commissioner Brum, we never know when somebody's not going to show up. He showed, he showed up last night, he got called last night because someone didn't show up.
Okay, you know that, but like, let's just say you got that information, you know, you know that you had $25,000 for, for this week that's available in the budget. So, that, what I'm understanding from listening to our county manager is, that money, you can go ahead and say, okay, go ahead, bring that person.
And I greatly appreciate that, but to hold my hands for me, I have to call the county manager every time I need someone.
That's, that's not what the policy says, Sheriff.
Because what, what Brum just said, you got, you got, you got a fund. So, from Wednesday, he can use that fund. If next week is the same thing, you come back, you get funds again, right?
And then that could be a, and Curtis.
Right.
A report from, from our finance director, or, you know, it could be anything. That's just, just accountability, that's-
Uh, uh, I totally understand accountability.
I'm sorry, what do you recommend, county manager?
Um, I recommend the policy as written, but, um, I recommend the policy as written, and just the sheriff and I have conversations about that set amount for each week, because right now the deputies, when they work in the jail, the salaries are still being charged to the sheriff's office. So, we need actual to do some journal entries to charge the time back to the detention officer. So, I don't know what the number is right now, because we have to go back to July 1st.
If they work together as a team and try to make sure this works.
Yes, right.
I think that's a great idea.
And I think we have a good working relationship, I would never ask you to call me to ask for approval to go pick up some deputies, come on now, Sheriff.
I, I'd like to make that motion if we do that way.
I'm sorry, yeah.
The two of you work together?
But doesn't that incorporate what Dan was talking about in terms of having the funds, that's safety?
Yeah, it's already in here, it's already written that way, yeah.
Carolyn, I'll make that a motion.
Got a motion?
No second?
Get a motion that we keep-
Keep, keep it, um, the policy is written.
Oh, I got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? All have it.
So, the next item, um, on the agenda is our annual opioid settlement meeting, and I'm just going to go through some statistical data, um. You got that, oh, yeah. So, welcome to our annual opioid meeting, which is required annually per the MOA. And the agenda for today is just the state of opioid and substance abuse in Vance County, opioid settlement progress report, and then some community and stakeholder input. But it's okay. So, um, this, um, actual presentation is available online, I know you all want baby to see this. But, um, so just in summary for the first slide, Vance County Emergency Department visits as of July 2025, so January to July 2025, there were 23 visits compared to 20 visits in 2024. And so, the visits are up 15% in our, um, emergency room, emergency room visits. And of course, this source is just from North Carolina Injury and Violence Prevention, a division of DHHS. Elicit opioids such as fentanyl were the largest contributor to overdose, um, emergency department visits. Vance County residents who are white male ages 25 to 54 had a higher rate of opioid overdose, um, emergency department visits compared to the county rate of 113.4. Go to the next slide, thank you. And so, this is just a summary of year-to-date 2024 data. And so, there were point, I'm sorry, there were 73 emergency department visits in 2024 compared to 80 in 2023. And the emergency department visits for med and drug overdose, I'm sorry, medicine or drugs with dependency potential. Let me see if there's anything else that I want to mention on this slide, no, I don't think so. You can go to the next one, that's fine. And so, the next slide is just, um, Vance County fentanyl positive deaths, positive deaths for 2025 year-to-date, and we are down 93% compared to 2024. There were 14, uh, from January to June of 2024, and now we are only at, I believe there's only one for this year. And so, there's a, there's been a decline in the, um, fentanyl, um, positive deaths in Vance County. Okay, and so, the next is North Carolina is receiving $1.4 billion in opioid settlement funds from 2022 through 2038. And then the next slide is just Vance County's, um, information. So, there's a, I'm sorry, yeah, there it is. So, it's $6.4 million from 2022 through 2028 is what Vance County will receive, and it's heavy on the front end so thus far. And so, Vance County has received $2.4 million, and we have dispersed $0 as of today. And so, the MOA offers local governments two options. Option A, a local government may fund one or more strategies from a shorter list of evidence-based high-impact strategies to address the epidemic. Or option B, a local government may fund one or more strategies from a longer list of strategies after engaging in a collaborative strategic planning process involving a diverse area of stakeholders. And so, option A, um, has several, um, abatement strategies, and I won't list them all, but it's evidence-based addiction treatment, recovery housing, post-overdose response teams, syringe service programs, re-entry programs, addiction treatment for incarcerated persons. And option B, um, is an additional opioid, um, activities, um, treat opioid use disorder, connect people who need help to help they need, address the needs of criminal justice-involved persons, prevent misuse of opioids, and prevent overdose deaths and other harms. And so, the commissioners have advertised the opioid committee, um, the, um, the seats for the opioid committee, and I believe they will consider the rest of those seats at their October 6 regular meeting. Some people have, some, um, committee members have already been appointed, and those are mainly just staff members. And so, next week we have public comment period for anyone that wants to come up and speak about, um, opioids here in Vance County. And just keep your comments to less than three minutes, please. Does anyone want to speak today? Oh, okay. Anyone have any questions? Oh, just the, okay, Elliot, okay.
Good afternoon, I'll be brief. Uh, Elliot Clark, I represent Via Health. Uh, I serve on the opioid advisory committees for Granville and Person County, uh, have for the last few years, and I just want to commend this board, uh, for making that movement towards establishing an advisory committee for this county. Uh, we all know the need is high, uh, the resources are very limited still. What we do is make sure that some of the programs that are put in place, I think, uh, my main approach is just sustainability, right? We need help, providers need to be supplemented to start new programs. There's a lot that needs to be done for this population that health insurance does not cover. Uh, the majority of individuals with opioid use disorder and substance use disorders as a primary need do not have Medicaid, and they weren't included in the expansion population. And we all know that there's a lot of evaluation going on for Medicaid across the board right now. So, I think counties, uh, have needed to be creative, and I just want to commend this county for making that movement towards pursuing this creative, uh, approach with the settlement. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Lisa Harrison, your local health director, and I'd be remiss if I didn't come up and say how much we appreciate the opportunities at your local health department to address this really, um, consistent issue that we've seen over the years. Uh, Dr. Shawna Guthrie is our medical director, and she was one of the first medical directors in the state of North Carolina for a local health department to start medication for opioid use disorder in 2016. So, we see patients in your local health department in Henderson and in Oxford, North Carolina, every day who need our assistance. And this work that is, um, covered by the memorandum of agreement, um, with the Attorney General's office, has had, um, some momentum on the Granville County side. We're really delighted that Kathy Haslett with our team has applied to be part of the task force here in Vance County, also serves as that strategic planner and project manager on the Granville County Opioid Advisory Committee, and looks at all of those opportunities to make a real difference. So, whether it's prevention, treatment, or harm reduction, your local health department and its staff do a lot of this work every day, and also address the need around hepatitis C, which is related. So, um, I will echo, um, Elliot's appreciation that we are looking at the treatment facility that is needed, facility-based crisis has been a high need in this area for a long time. Um, and so, we're, uh, going to stand ready to work with you on anything you need us to do as your local health department, thanks.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Cheryl Bateman, and, um, my, I come representing the faith-based part of your community, my husband pastors here in Henderson. So, I want to say thank you, um, as the others have, for the investment that you are making to address this crisis. As you can tell, we also represent Recovery Alive, and so, we thank you for that opportunity for the grant to bring the Recovery Alive homes here. We have some recovery ministries that are developed and are developing, um, in this county to help address those people who are getting the treatment and want to move into recovery and live in recovery. And so, I just appreciate that, and, um, from your community and, um, representing Recovery Alive.
Hi there, how you guys doing today? My name is Rebecca, I am the face of recovery. I abused drugs, I was incarcerated, rehabilitated, I was a nurse that stole medications from a ride perm hospital. I'm going to start the same way, I started every recovery meeting that I hold over at South Henderson Church of God. My name's Rebecca, and I'm a grateful believer in Jesus, and recovery is possible. I want to say thank you for giving us the opportunity to recover, because not everybody gets that opportunity. I want to say thank you for taking a stand for our people, because our people have circular family dysfunction that is killing us. So, I appreciate every endeavor and every first foot that you put, place forward to help with incarceration and drug rehabilitation, and us to get to the root problems of addiction, which is just plainly put, bad decisions. Thank you.
Congratulations.
I just wanted to say, as you can see, our shirt's Recovery Alive. We are here representing Tisha Temple, who is the COO of Recovery Alive. She asked us to be here tonight on her behalf, so we just want to say thank you for everything you're doing, to help us run this cause.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Shanika Hargrove. I am a therapist for substance use and mental health, I represent Vance Recovery. Um, we are a harm reduction facility that, um, distributes medication assistance, treatment along with counseling and medical, um, assistance. I want to thank you for what you all do. Um, we noticing that it's some new places in Vance that are, um, dispensing the, um, Narcania, so that helps bridge the gap with access to, um, relapse prevention. Also, they can give it to other people that are struggling to prevent overdose. A barrier here, as you say, is the Medicaid that I see. A lot of people that are in the working class are struggling too. Their over income for these Medicaid programs, they can't afford it. So, I like the visions that you all have, I actually took a picture of them, they was up here with the plan A and B, I see some good stuff up there. Uh, we work with the health department, um, and Dr. Guthrie getting people tested for help seeing, um, harm reduction, every day meeting people where they at, because everybody's at a different stage. So, I think it's good to put some of this money into Vance County, especially MAT programs, um, that assist with withdrawals, so, thank y'all.
That's it, that concludes my report.
So, um, where are we all with the committee, with the, up there on the committee?
Uh, so, um, you all are considering other appointments at your October 6 meeting, and so, once the committee is established, we'll set up our initial meeting.
And all have come in for each?
Yes, ma'am.
So, we got to get a motion. Thank you all so much. Um, and I understand the importance of the, you know, I'm listening to you all, Recovery Alive, and people, we realize that everybody, somewhere, family, somebody is affected in a family. I have a brother that I sent away years ago to, uh, to Texas to get some help, and I thank God that they had a recovery, um, facility there, that, um, face bath that I sent him to, and it did great work, so I thank you all, and they, and they can recover. So, it means a lot to me as well. Um, because I'm, I can sure, some, just for all of us, somewhere have been touched by some family member. So, thank you all, and thank you for your story. So, right now, can we get a motion for, that's it, um, for closed session?
I'd just like to reiterate what you said in terms of working with the community. I think that the more people we have involved in trying to solve a problem, we can make a difference in Vance County, and we can work toward helping people recover and lead a life that they were, they were deemed to do, okay?
Do you want to make a motion, we're going to a session?
So, we got a motion and a second, do we go in, all in favor? All opposed? So, closed session.